Seven o'clock. The first thing on the agenda is we're gonna open a public hearing for the apartment ordinance amendments. Ordinance nineteen dash zero one. Is there anyone here to speak on that? What it is, is back and forth avenue from Sixth Street a hundred feet west, we're gonna paint yellow so nobody can park there because it's one of the foul truck letting it through because that's where the house sits out in the street next to me. And the other is no parking on the east side of Rowland Street from Sixth Avenue to...
Ninth.
Till Ninth, so for three blocks. Anyone here to speak on that? Okay. Moving on, motion to close that, right?
I'll move the closing ceremony.
Second. Okay. All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, we'll start the regular meeting. Call the meeting board and we'll state the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. I look for an approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
All the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, here. Item five, public appearance and citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Ladies, are you here for that?
They're here for the wine lot.
Yeah. We're here in case you have any questions about that.
For the wine lot.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, moving on then. Golf, you had nothing to say?
Correct.
Okay. It's good.
Really?
I just like giving it to golf once in a while. Item six, approval of the consent agenda.
I approve approval of the consent agenda.
All the favor say aye? Aye. Oh, most of the carries. So I guess we have no questions, just gotta move.
Okay, yeah. Yay!
Okay, item seven, finance personnel committee. Item eight, consideration resolutions nineteen seventeen, appointment of deputy clerk treasurer.
Yes. We were fortunate to have Wendy Schudy who serves, currently serves as the deputy clerk treasurer or deputy clerk at Green County agreeing to accept the position. We had years of service there, so looking forward to that. Resolution starts at twenty-one dollars a month.
Isn't appropriate to put somewhere in the notes that the appointment of the deputy clerk treasurer is a policy right of the clerk to, I don't know how to say it, to interview and select? Is that appropriate or, I guess you can, if you want it in the minutes, it's in the village ordinance that the appointment is, the clerk treasurer appoints the deputy with confirmation by the board.
Can you put that sentence into the notes?
Okay.
And it came to personnel and finance, that's why I'm approving it. Sentence along.
And so I would move that we approve resolution nineteen seventeen for appointment of full-time deputy clerk treasurer.
Second.
Can you move discussion?
I just have one comment.
Okay.
Okay. I think this is a good time to reiterate what we've said at the last two meetings about hiring personnel. We have to come up with a set, sound schedule of some sort. Just for the record.
Actually, I brought something in here. It's Lynn. Last week we had a landfill meeting for the county and they kind of redid their steps a little bit as laborers down there, so we've got that here. I don't know if it's gonna help to go off of that or anything, but...
Anything will help.
Yeah. And I think Lynn said we could get from the highway department, you know, I think there's multiple places out there we can get some place to be able to get this thing started and set up.
So this is one of the things we dumped on the new guy in the car. Sounds good.
I love research.
But we do. We made it.
Be grateful.
I bring it up, I don't have any qualms about this. I just wanna keep this on the radar.
Well, and I wasn't here for that particular meeting, but prior to that when we did the interviews and then we negotiated contract, we went with the same procedure we always did, you know, that you get some probationary period and it's this much and then this much. But again, I think it's a good idea because we were picking it, yeah, we were just like, well, what did we do last time? Were this...
Yeah, we had no...
Yeah, we had no direction. We just followed precedent, so I think we did good.
PFA, pluck from air.
Mm-hmm. So...
Can we put that on the next agenda for personnel and finance?
Or is that too quick? Together, was that together?
Is that not our time? That is the question. Just three weeks, I mean, cause it's an extra week in there.
I can do my very best.
So even if we had two or three samples...
We're just gonna discuss it. Have it out there, right there, and if you're not ready, we'll wait.
Sure.
Or something.
Okay, do you have a motion, second, Mike?
Yeah, I have, along those lines, I just have a question too for, and this is not for this particular position, but for all positions in the village, is there a job description for every, every position?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good.
Any more comments? Here and done, we have motion, second, all the favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, hold. Okay. Discussion consideration resolution nineteen dash eighteen. Resolution board accept one million five hundred and seventy thousand general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty nineteen A.
Third.
If you haven't met me before, I'm Dave Ferris, Ellers, I'm associate. Actually, I guess we're just called Ellers now, I shouldn't say it anymore. Somebody said that today and they got me phoned up at the office, so anyways, I'm here, first of all, thank you very much for letting us serve you. We really appreciate your business. And I think I'm here to give you some pretty good news about your sale today. So I think let's dive into it. I have a report that I brought with me, sale report that you had in front of you. And if you turn to page one, this is a summary of the sale results today. Earlier in the day, we took bids. You end up having about, well, you end up having five bids. Usually you like to see at least three, so you had some good interest today. The issue in front of you is the two thousand nineteen A general corporate purpose bonds series two thousand nineteen A. The amount that actually was sold today is a million five fifty, even though your agenda says a million five seventy. There was, there was some savings or some premium that we'll talk about in just a second that had an effect on that, but the purpose of the two thousand nineteen A bonds was to fund Third Street's street projects, storm sewer projects, water projects, and sewer projects. And in addition, it also refunds the two thousand fifteen C sewer revenue bond anticipation notes. That was kind of a short-term borrowing. I wasn't here for it at that time, but probably there were some things that weren't known at that time. But now that we, you know, we've got to the point where we're ready to put it in permanent financing, we put it into this issue to refinance that. It gave us the ability to structure that, those debt payments over a longer period of time. And based on the coverage that's needed in the sewer utility, we wanted to see at least a coverage of what's called one, which means that you have enough revenue to cover that debt payment without going below a one-to-one. So when we schedule that out, we wanna keep those debt payments structured in such a way that you have the proper coverage to pay off, you know, not only your operating, but your debt service as well. And so that was the purpose for bringing that in and structuring it out to a point where you're, it's probably about twelve or thirteen years that we ended up stretching that over so that we'd stay within the revenue coverage. The amount of bonds sold today, like I said, was a million five hundred and fifty thousand compared to, when I actually was sitting at the table with you, was a million five hundred and eighty thousand, but some of the things we talked about at that meeting, we found a couple things that we tweaked with like the attorney fees and some of the other fees. And so we issued a revised pre-sale report to Lynn a couple days later, that was a million five seventy. So as a result of the winning bid, which had a premium in it, we were able to downsize the issue another twenty thousand. So instead of a billion being a million five seventy in the revised, we're down to a million five fifty because of not only better rates, but also the premium that we were able to apply to reduce the size of the issue. The reduction of the size along with the interest rates received will result in overall principal interest being fifty-two thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars less than the pre-sale estimates in the revised pre-sale report that we sent out to Lynn. As I said, there was five bids. If you turn to page two, this is a listing of who bid on your, your bonds today. They're ordered in lowest true interest cost to highest true interest cost. The winning bid was Bernard Securities out of Chicago, Illinois, at two-point-six-nine percent. And Northland Securities was the high at two-point-eight-six. I do wanna mention that Bankers Bank, who had participation with a local bank, Bank of New Glarus, also had what was called the cover bid, that's the second-place bid. And in addition to that, Bankers Bank and Bank of New Glarus reached out to Bernardies and actually purchased some of your bonds that sold today, so they had a participation today. And I thought it was worthy to mention that today, that not only they're pretty really close to being the winning bid, but they also participated in buying some of your securities. As far as page one goes, and we're back to, like I said, the low bid was two-point-six-nine-one-six percent by Bernardies. The high bid was like, again, two-point-eight-six, two-two percent. And that ended up being about a savings of about eighteen thousand three hundred dollars between that top bid and the low bid. You know, when we came out here six weeks ago, you kinda have to take a look at what's been going on in the market. Obviously, in December, things were on their way up and things kind of zigzagged a little bit, but have been coming down nicely lately in the last few weeks. So we actually ended up, like I said, with that premium bid, ended up having a savings overall to that pre-sale report of about fifty-three thousand dollars. So great that the rates keep coming down. I actually have a schedule that I'll finish with that shows you how the rates look over the last five years and really shows you where we are compared to, you know, maybe even the last time you've issued debt. As far as the money, you, the closing date on the bonds is May seventh, so on May seventh, you will receive the funds. You'll be able to start paying off your, or paying for some of your projects if you've had any engineering to date, those will be eligible. And then if the contractor has started, probably not yet, but you'll be, you'll have your funds on hand and be able to pay those. The other thing that you'll have money for is on May twenty-first, we're going to call that revenue bond anticipation note, and so those funds will be on hand and be able to pay off that issue and have that defeesed. So does Amy have any questions on anything I've talked about first?
Do you have any idea, Dave, what the interest we're paying on that revenue bond that we're gonna be paying off now? You got that anyplace or not?
I want, for some reason, I wanna say it was three and a quarter, but I don't have it in...
Okay, okay. So it probably is higher than what we're gonna be paying on this year.
Be the one, what we refinance.
Right.
You know, and that was like, that was a short-term bond that was coming due. And I think one of the reasons we bumped it up a year from its maturity date is because there's a chance that you might not borrow next year. And so to go out and borrow just for that by itself, when we can roll it into this and save some potential issuance costs, seems like a good idea. Anything else before I kind of run through the schedules? I know Mike's the new trustee and I thought I'd go through these a little closer than I would've if you had an existing board sitting here, so it's a must.
Not necessary.
Not necessary?
Yeah, it's fine, go ahead.
Okay. I'll just go briefly go over these, and if you want me to go into it in more detail, I will. The one that talks about the debt service tax rate, I'll probably spend a little more time on because that's, there's a lot of numbers and I'd like you to see what we're doing, the structuring of the debt and try and keep the tax rate stable. Page three is a comparison of the pre-sale report to what actually happened today. You know, you have, you have the projects up top and the refunding of the bonds, which gets you down to a project cost of a million five. Because they had the premiums today, there's a portion of the premium that has to go into debt service. And when we look at the next schedule, you'll see where we're applying that to the interest payments for the next couple of years. The amount that, a premium that didn't have to go into the debt service is what we use to downsize some of the, some of the issue. So you can see there's a re-offering premium of fifty-one thousand. That netting against the thirty-seven is kind of where we're getting that twenty thousand of savings or reduction of the, of the size. The next schedule is the repayments by the sources or the funding sources, basically the funds. The levy is the streets portion and then, and that's paid, as I said, by the property tax levy. The other columns are paid for by the user fees in those utilities, so the stormwater utility fees pay for that, the water utility fees, et cetera. Now, where I was talking about the premium, you can see we've added a column into this repayment schedule. So those amounts, those negative amounts in those add up to that thirty-seven thousand dollars that I had up in that last schedule that had to be applied to debt service. What happens is, is when you get that, there's a portion that they, it has to go in your debt service fund. And so instead of having to pay money out of your, out of your debt service fund like we thought was going to happen, and I know Lynn asked about that, is, is because of that premium, you will not have to use any of your debt service fund balance to pay for that. And it also will give you, these amounts that you see here, it definitely in the levy portion. So next year, when you levy then, you'll wanna take that nine hundred and forty-four dollars into account to not levy for that because that's a reduction of that interest expense. You'll, it'll go into, I think if the auditors do it the way that I would've done it, it'll show up as a liability this year and then you'll, you'll end up applying it to your, to your expense next year. So it reduces how much you actually have as an expense next year for, for debt service, okay?
Okay.
And then the stormwater utilities, those will flow through and you'll just, you know, that'll go into your true interest payable and you'll end up paying less in interest next year, probably, because this will be cash available for next year's interest. The next schedule is the one that I referred to before that really works out the debt service structure and how it affects the debt rate. So just so you have an idea of what this schedule looks like, that first part right here where it says existing debt payments, before we did the borrowing today, this is what was here right now. You have equalized value of eighteen and nineteen, which is actual amounts for value that the village is worth right now. And we show what we're using, the actual growth was seven-point-five-eight then, we're using two percent growth for twenty-twenty based on the discussion staff and then one percent going on, just, just to be conservative in guessing how much the village will grow. We're hoping that it goes better than that, maybe you can get some business in town that can either reinvest or maybe some new businesses. Then the principal and interest is what you actually to date have as payments going out to twenty-thirty-five. Of that amount, the total, this says total less non-levy revenues are basically the amounts that are being paid for by the stormwater utility, the sewer utility, and the water utility. And that leads you of how much has to be levied through the property tax levy. Make sense? So if you take that net debt service levy divided by the equalized value, you get the equalized debt service tax rate. So your equalized debt service tax rate would have been two dollars and sixty-eight cents. So if somebody were to take their tax bill and using market value of equalized value that's on their tax bill and multiply it by this rate, they would get how much they would pay for debt service. The pink column is what happened today, the structure that, that we used for this debt. You have that added to what you had to the left with the net debt service, less what is being paid for by the other utilities, and you get down to what your new net debt service levy amount is. The column right before that is how much the levy basically is going to get hit each year by the debt service that, that was added into that pink column, which is, so just to be clear there, that column next to the net, there's net debt service levy is the levy portion that is running through that pink column. Does that make sense? So the pink is everything, less what is paid for by the other funds. And then you have some special assessments that are going to be applied against this payment as well because you're special assessing that street. And that gets you down to how much you're gonna levy. Okay? That make sense? I can try that in a different direction if you want. Does that make sense? So if you take, we show you what the difference of the rate is and actually the amounts that are in the levy change column were more, for two thousand twenty was actually more in the nine thousands, but because of our savings, it's a little bit lower than that. And now we have that levy dropping over the next couple of years. And really what a good sign of what, what we like to have the debt service levy look like is to have that rate falling. And what that really shows is that you have flexibility in the future, that if you do more projects, you know, maybe it's a park or a library or another street or whatever, you have room to levy and try to hold that debt service tax rate smooth over time. The way that we do this for you is so that you don't have a bunch of this and you don't have people coming in here yelling, go out, their taxes going out, especially if it went down drastically the year before, that you're not getting this. We try to structure your debt so that the debt service portion of your tax levy is smooth. And if you were to be an annual borrower, we would probably try to have you like two dollars and sixty-eight cents every year going forward. But that would mean that you would have a project every year. So it might not be quite like that, but we're trying to get it so that the impact on the taxpayer is basically nothing. And that's doable if you really plan out your projects. Okay? And now we kind of showed you, I don't think we ever talked about what I should've used for an average home, but on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, you can see that the amount of taxes on that home is going down over time and that's, you know, it, like I said, if you're structuring your debt and you're doing projects in such a way, that amount either stays smooth or goes down a little bit over time. Okay? Any questions?
Where is, where is that?
Oh, the two-hundred, that's the problem I shared earlier.
So why is there that, you know, it does go down, but then there's that two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-dollar bond...
That's a drop.
That's going down.
Yeah. Some of your existing debt drops off because we've met...
Oh, I see, I see. Okay.
So you actually, at that point in time, you're actually at a point where, you know, there might, it might be a good time to, you'd have a really good opportunity to put in a bigger project there because you're having such a drop in your debt service. There's, there's, that would be dropping off in those years. And for some reason, the existing debt has some kind of a lift down in two thousand thirty-one that it goes up a little bit. We're not really sure how that happened, but it's way out there. So, you know, the, you know, when we get out that far, we're affecting it with another borrow and we can smooth that out so that it actually is going down. We weren't going out far enough really that, that it was affecting that too much. I put in debt capacity schedule, this is only with the two thousand nineteen issue. It's, you know, because that first amount is just, you know, thirty thousand less than what I showed you last time, you know, the amount of the percentage debt limit used is like, instead of being sixty-three-point-eight percent, it's sixty-three-point-two. But the, the way that it drops down, once again, this shows you flexibility because your debt's getting paid down, you're, you're opening up flexibility as far as another issue that you can stay below that seventy-five percent that I'm showing. And remind me, Lynn, is that a policy or is that something that we just put in here just to show you a little?
That's a policy.
Okay. So, you know, from our perspective, we'd like to, you know, we encourage you to stay below that anyways because really that last twenty-five percent, if you're really up that high, should be for mostly emergency purposes and give yourself flexibility if something, you know, happened that you needed to go out and borrow some money. But as you can see, you know, it's smoothly dropping off, it's given you the ability to do projects in the future. As we looked at last time, I actually have the debt capacity with a proposed library or park and a street in it, and you were still staying within that seventy-five percent when we talked about it the last time. And Lynn, you know, if you, if you wanna share that with your new trustee here, you can show him what I'm talking about with those other proposed, you know, kind of like crystal ball, kind of a look at some projects that the village is considering. And then the last schedule I have in here is the last five years of interest rates. And as you can, as you can see, December had quite a bump up, but we've had quite a period of dropping. There was a little bit of a bump up last week. Yeah, it went up a little bit, but we're coming back down again this week, so, you know, the way that, you know, the market for municipal bonds and funds are really in demand right now, there isn't as much of that out in the market right now because they took away, the Trump tax cut took away the advance refunding opportunity. So people used to refund their debt earlier than the call date and that's no longer allowed, although there's been some romblings about bringing it back. The other thing is, is there's more demand for municipal securities right now because the Trump tax cut ended up affecting people a little bit more and their tax liability went up. And so they're, they're using municipal bonds as a way to find, to use to get their, their tax liability down as well. So hopefully that continues to have the municipal bond market keep going down, but, you know, at some point, we're, we're not gonna probably get down to that really low point, but it'd be nice if we could stay in a good market area like we are now, so. If not, you know, thanks for letting me, because of the, the sale results and when you, if Lynn considered this, if you're voting, if you could do a better roll call, that'd be great.
You have a motion to accept the... I approve we accept the resolution nineteen eighteen, order of sale, one million five hundred and seventy thousand obligation corporate funds.
And it's actually the one million five fifty.
Yeah.
You have a new resolution, yes, sorry.
I'll sign it.
You second the...
Ready?
Yep.
Mike?
Hi.
Hey. Chad?
Yes.
Pedro?
Yes.
How's you?
Right here to sign this, so it's safe from the others' way.
Yeah, you just need to do the bid tab and then I, then the resolution...
Okay, and myself?
You get one and I get one. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the rest of it goes to Brian.
Yep. And he gets the full... I think you get a few more, so you can try and get that one.
Yeah, he sent an email with a letter attached, so... Not all Brian. He was looking confused.
That's not even my Brian. Congratulations. Nice to meet you.
Thanks.
Thank you, thanks.
Yep, thank you. Have a good rest of your week.
Thank you.
Okay, new board business. I don't make updates in the adoption of resolutions 1913, the 10th Redway Vacation... How's that word? Of Fourth Street. Is that the one by you, Chuck? That's the problem?
Well, you want to expand your lot? Is that it? Okay.
So there's never been a street down there since...
Do you want me to speak to this? I mean, I'm kind of in general.
You're the one that's bringing it up.
I'm kind of in a... You know, I am a board member, but... My letter is attached. Description, but... Just give you an overview. The property... The property between myself and Garner Park, the buyer's east property line, Garner Park west property line, is, is and has been, since my great-grandparents owned property, dedicated for street. It's the last remaining 132 feet of Fourth Avenue, Fourth Street. It's Fourth Avenue and Fourth Street. We're talking about Fourth Street. It's the last segment of Fourth Street to the north. There has never been a Fourth Street to the north, yes. And to the south, we recently vacated the half plot of Fourth Street, the 132 feet. There is between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, a Fourth Street, and then there's no more Fourth Street until Eighth Avenue. So essentially, what I'm saying is, there's no street, and there's no functional need for a street. We're working on the Garner Park project, and I had talked to Brian about this previously, and it just seemed like it would be a good idea that banning the street, the village has, will gain clear title to half of the street. I would gain title to my side of the property, which would give me access to my property for a potential driveway, which as of now legally, if my shed driver, you know, I really don't have a... I'm on the property line, I don't need code setback, so it would solve, you know, it would solve the potential taking of my rights by the village and also give the village clear title to that so that if they need to extend a little bit of concrete or possible concession stand in bathrooms, it wouldn't be an arguable situation. Basically, what I really want to demonstrate is, you know, there's not going to be a street there.
So can I ask, Chuck, why is it the house, the property north of you has no...
It's never...
It was just never...
Never done.
So they don't have, they don't have any of that issue with the street going through? That was already...
That's their property. There's no street dedication.
Really?
Well, it used to be, that used to be a... Even in my time, that was all vacant land, okay? And it actually was part of a former farm property and a gentleman built.
So that was really, for decades, never going anywhere?
No, and at the same time, Third Avenue was... It ended at Fifth Street, okay? And then everything was farmland beyond, to the west and north of that. It's just the way things developed, and, you know, it was pre-plant mission. They really was looking ahead, it's just things developed as they did.
But it's not the only time, is it?
No, no. But, you know, across, across Third Avenue, the, there's a brick house, a brick ranch at 400, Third Avenue, which, you know, was built right where Fourth Street would have gone, but it was not a... There were Second Avenue up on the hill, north of that, didn't exist. There was, there was a narrow road to, to where Patriots' House is, and that was basically the end of, end of the road. And there was an unpaved gravel washout dirt road that circled around from, you know, farm property on the west. And then there was a farmhouse to the west, directly to the west of Patriots' House. I'm assuming you all know where that is, which, you know, was moved when they built the big, the big modern house. Just out of curiosity, say, to your knowledge, do they have plans, does the park have plans for that, at the street at all? Not, no, I mean, only within codes. So...
Okay, that's fine.
It would give, it would give, it would give the park plan, the Garner Park plan, a little more leeway in, if, if they were going to put up a permanent structure.
I understand.
To, to not have to worry about setbacks and things, and I think it'd just be better for everybody.
Oh, yeah, like later.
So, yeah, there's already been a potential technical encroachment on that, but there's no structure there, it's just concrete and light posts, so it's not a big deal. But anyway, it would give me relief, it would give the park plan... When we were discussing this at Park meeting two months ago, the park consultant said, you know, maybe us to have clear title on that for the village. And I agree, it'd be best for both of us to have clear title. So...
So I see this as just as an update, you know, the other is bad.
This is the first step.
For a public hearing.
Yeah, so we have to have a 40-day notice period, have to schedule the public hearing, which, when I looked at the calendar, June 4th seemed to be the one that would give us the amount of time needed to meet the 40 days and all the notice requirements, so we'll put it on that June 1st agenda.
Okay. That was good. Anything else you want to add, Chuck?
Yeah, I did, I was going to mention that there is a 132 feet of Fourth Street to the south, just south of, and just for those of you that know, the property that we vacated, the street we vacated, okay, so there's Jesse Brooks and Bill Bigler. Those are, yeah, for my wills. They, that still is a dedicated street, and Jesse's now building a shed. Bill has a fairly large area of blacktop driveway on that, on that property. That's not going to be a street either because it doesn't...
It's already abandoned.
...vacation, abandonment of property in the north, but, you know, I think it would be best to, if there's any other properties like this, to get them cleared up before it becomes an arguable situation. Jesse and Bill did not want to vacate, and that's fine, they didn't request it, we didn't have anything to act on, but it's sort of, it seems like a housekeeping thing to me that everybody should know.
Chuck? Yeah. Just a question, and it's an assumption on my part, but I'm going to assume that there are no sewer or utility lines going there.
That is, that's probably something we should have brought up. Just Lynn and I discussed that according to...
It is part of the resolution that...
It's probably in there?
Yep.
Okay. I'm really responsible for notifying, or for discovering and notifying any, any utilities in there, and I believe also for the survey of the property, which like Jan stood that on the property. I suspect there may be a, there may be a telephone cable, but I don't know where it runs. Other than that, there's no, there's no sewer or...
What about gas, Chuck? Is gas in the terrace or is gas in the street?
No, there's no gas, it's in the street. I mean, it's from the street through the terrace, through my terrace.
Right, right, yeah.
I have nothing going back. Yeah. But still, that has to be, I'm sure that has to be verified.
And you wouldn't have any objection if there is something there to have a way, in the way of a utility easement? If there is something?
No, I wouldn't have any objection, and I, and I don't think, if, what is there? I think it's actually going to be on the east, the village portion of the property.
Okay.
There was a driveway for, well, it's in my letter, it was a driveway to my grandfather's wax shop.
Yeah, that was...
It was, it was one of those situations in the past where the village kind of took care of it, plowed it.
Yeah.
Why they dumped some gravel in it, you know, the way things were done back then. And the, the street superintendent at the time, he said, "Yeah, fine, you need this, and you can weld up our truck axles or something," you know? Yeah.
Okay. So the only thing to do is a 40-day notice, that'll be the next step?
Yeah, we all have to work on the descriptions and easements, and I'll act on that 40 days, but...
Okay.
Basically, that's just an update.
Yeah, just an update. Just, like Lynn said, the first step to keep moving forward.
Introduce it to the...
So, let's see, item nine, consideration, park ordinance amendments to section 8821, WX ordinance 1901, which is what we have a public hearing on. And does everybody understand where we're talking about here? Okay. Drake probably doesn't.
I catch up.
You've got to take those walks.
Yeah, yeah.
I would move approval of the park ordinance amendments, as written in the... Back to Sable?
No.
Thanks.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All motions carried. Don't have anything to say on the administrative report?
Just that I'm excited to be here.
Good, we're excited to have you.
That'll change in the next...
You're trying to take a walk, you might... Do you have a bulletproof vest?
No. He's already been out twice in two days in a row, and he came back. Lynn had binoculars, I saw her in the window. Tracking points.
Okay, President's report, consideration resolution 1916 in appreciation, appreciation of service of trustees Anderson and Edge. It's in your packet? Or... Do you need someone to read this?
Let's see.
Okay. Village Newglers, resolution 1916, resolution recognizing service of Village of Newglers by the trustees Barbara Anderson and Anthony Edge. Whereas trustee Barbara Anderson was initially elected to the board on April 2015, and trustee Anthony Edge was initially elected on April 2017, and have continually served the village board since, and whereas the Village of Newglers recognizes years of service by trustees Anderson and Edge, the tremendous dedication, commitment, knowledge, and service to the electors of the village, and the village board will be missed. The village board of the Village of Newglers, bringing to you this conference here by extended sincere gratitude to Barbara Anderson and Anthony Edge for their service and commitment of time dedicated to make the Village of Newglers a better community. Thank you. Roger Trumper and Lynn Erb.
I'm moved for approval on resolution 18-16.
All favors say aye. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All. All motions carried. Consideration, filling of trustee vacancy position, set from page 65.
This is just a draft for something to get started looking at. So we are, at this point, we are just considering the draft, correct? Can I just speak to this just a little bit?
Yep.
Okay. So I, I guess I have issues on both sides in terms of filling these vacancies. One is, I wonder if we can expedite the process of filling the seats of someone who resigned by having that as a appointee by the president. I just feel a little bit like we've gone so long with all these seats empty, this just doesn't seem like we're doing our job to the community by leaving these seats open for as long as we did, especially Sean. So I wonder if we could add language that would allow for someone who has left due to illness, death, or something, and allow the president to...
But we already...
We approved the policy.
We already approved the policy.
Okay.
That's in place now. It's an ordinance.
Yeah, but I, okay, okay. I just wondered, because I got the thinking about it, and I, like, hmm, that doesn't, that means all those seats open. I guess it's an afterthought about that.
No, I think it's probably, I understand where you're coming from, but that was my, my purpose in initially bringing this to the board. my purpose in initially bringing this to the board.
To expedite.
To, well, not necessarily expedite it, no, to make sure we have a policy in place for appointing someone that is vetted in some form or another, rather than just saying, "Fine, you want to be on the board, you're on the board." You know, we've discussed this before. Maybe you weren't?
No, I wasn't.
You weren't here, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Okay. So we, we did, we did pass a policy.
One thing?
That, that we would go through this procedure of, of application, interviews, sorting out, and then voting on the person.
Yeah, I guess I did understand, but I thought, I guess I thought it wasn't all.
And now that we have the policy, it shouldn't take very long going forward, you know, to get, who should?
Depending.
Might have.
Depending on how many applications. We didn't get anybody's.
Well, well, no, I know, I mean, it won't, won't take as long to post it.
Yeah, I guess I read in the notes, I was gone, but I didn't, it wasn't real clear on where we were on that stage, so.
I think one thing we need clarification, Sean, is if we put an ad in the paper, how long we want to run that ad? If we don't get it filled, I don't see that we need to have that ad in the paper for weeks or months.
That's true.
I mean, I think, couple of weeks maybe, I don't know. I think we need to, we need to establish something there.
Well, yeah.
So this ad just doesn't run till we get it filled.
Yeah, but I don't think we, I don't think we have to set a, I don't think we have to set a time in writing. I think that's up to our discretion, so, so if we direct Lynn to run this ad for a week, two weeks, whatever, this, this thing that's in front of us, and then see what happens. I think when we were discussing the initial policy, we also decided, you know, we're not going to set a, we're not going to set a timeline on this, because we'd be, you know, we'd be, we'd be locking ourselves into something as an ordinance. And who knows? We don't know. And considering the, considering the, the, just the recent history of nobody running, I don't think we should be saying, well, let's just go grab somebody off the street. We're just going to have to function as a five-member board, which other villages do, until such time as we get somebody that's, there's no point in having somebody that's not running, of course. And there's no point in having somebody that just drops in out of the blue and says, "Hey, I don't have anything to do for the next 12 months, I'll do this." So I, I don't think we have to set a time by formal motion or anything, I think we should see what happens. Throw it out there, put it in the, if we, if we approve this, and I, by the way, I think, I think this is great.
Should we set a, a two-week limit and then?
Well, I think that's a, I don't think we need to do that.
No, I have no objection to that.
This time, let's just do it two weeks, see if we get some application.
That's all I'm just asking for, is the ad in the paper. I mean, I'm not saying anything else, but after two weeks, we just.
Oh, okay, I thought you were asking.
No, no, I'm just, I didn't want, an ongoing ad, you know, say it takes, we don't get anybody for a month or two, then we keep regenerating this ad in the paper every week.
No, I think let's run it for two weeks and see what we can.
Yeah, if at the end of two weeks, we don't get anybody, Lynn will come back and say if we don't have anybody.
That's all right, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about ever.
Have you seen any experience with this, Drake, or how we would go about soliciting some potential?
Nothing different than this process, it's about soliciting applicants from, I mean, it's not, it's not a common occurrence necessarily, but it does happen, and I think it's similar to how other places do it. I can check with other places if you'd like me to.
No, if it's, I mean, I thought maybe there was another, something else you might know.
I think in the last issue of the municipality, or either that, it was the online thing, there was a, an article on, on filling vacancies, but it was for fourth-class city, and, you know, they have a different procedure, but there was some insight into what happens and how it happens in that.
Just, just looking at my calendar here, our next meeting is April, or, I mean, 7th, correct?
Right.
Which is three weeks out.
Sorry, about the two weeks to advertise and then bring it back.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that's good timing.
I just wanted a clarification.
Then we'll know when. The application, fill me in on this portion, is we've already constructed that, or we're going to look at?
I think we're just asking for a letter of.
Interest.
Oh, it says in here, just a simple letter.
Yeah, just a letter of interest, that's it.
But what Mike said reminds me that, or somebody said, Lynn and I, I guess, briefly talked about, where are we going to, where are we going to, where are we going to do The legal notice boards, the Newglers Post Messenger Recorder, they had, I mean, it's the village, it's not, you can't advertise in the State Journal.
No.
You want me to do a post-messenger recorder website, Facebook? Do you want me to post it on the boards where I post agendas as well?
Definitely on the, on the hosting boards, I think, just for legality's sake.
We would then run that as an ad and take word as an ad, is it, again, nickels and dimes here, but is it, would it be more cost efficient to have the post messenger do an article, and then at the end say, "If you are interested," and then we would use that as an article rather than an ad? Would you rather do it?
If they would do that, that'd be great. I mean, but, you know, we'd probably have to write it up, because they just do rip and rave, and they don't like to report news. And that's a good point, nickels and dimes is nickels and dimes, and I agree with you. But we can still put in a, you know, I don't even want long raids out there.
Well, we just did a bill that sixty-some dollars was one time in the mineral times in the ad, but it was much lengthier than this.
Yeah, but it's more expensive, sure. But I, I think, I don't know, I don't know if, if legally we would feel we need to put an actual paid ad in the local paper. It is, it's our paper of record, right, Lynn?
Yes.
Or if, or, I mean, I'd just love to have them, I'd love to force them to actually run an article.
Well, it's news, and we are not profit.
Yeah, I know, but they don't report those, they report, you know, sports.
Just so you know, the nomination for running for election, an article was run in the post messenger recorder, see where that got us, but.
Well, that's not their fault, but.
Somebody would just send them some tax.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I think if we just asked them to run an article, they would do that for us.
Okay. We must have some.
Can you tell them, rather than placing an ad, at the end, large font, I'll just ask them to.
With photos.
Yeah, with photos, with four members, yeah, we can like, good time, yeah. Yeah, not just make it, well, Hamidah God, nine.
Yeah, I know.
Make it eighteen.
You used to be a typesetter?
I did.
Did you really?
I don't know what you're talking about. Where were you the typesetter?
I had a little ownership in the Newglers Post.
Why did our, our own post, we wanted a motion on this?
Consideration.
They can probably just direct us to issue a press release.
They can, you can do a motion if you'd like, but I don't know if it's, we're not spending money.
We can just issue it to them as a press release and ask them to.
Consensus to.
We just did a post messenger bill for a lot of money, so.
Yeah, that's normal, and it's being.
Yeah, still.
Election stuff.
A little bit of election stuff.
We can go that route, and if it doesn't work, then we can do a full-page, dump page spread, yeah.
Are, are you okay if they, I'm sure they'll run an article, but if they would, for some reason, say, "Oh, we can't do that," do you then want the ad placed for two weeks?
Well, we definitely want the ad placed, don't we?
Either way?
Well, the ad.
They won't print the article, yeah.
Yeah.
You're saying, you're saying we should ask them to print a news article and then take out an ad?
Well, I think the news article will be part, will have the ad in it, won't it?
It'll be similar, it'll be similar to what.
What is in here?
Yeah. That would be the news article.
I think they'll write it just as an article, we won't have to do the ad.
Doff, you have some input?
I'm just wondering if you thought of a signing bonus.
You would think of that.
Signing bonus. The bedrooms are going to want to be raised, so, you know.
You know what, just to be, just to be on the up and up, let's at least put in an ad for one week.
With the article.
With the article.
Okay.
Okay. You know, it's due diligence, just to say we made.
The effort.
The effort to, to get someone. And along with the, the website, the.
Yeah, can I just run this up?
Chuck, I think that's going to attract a little bit more attention too than just the, I don't know, it's, it's weird times.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, so just so I know, I have it right here, consensus is to request the post messenger recorder to run an article for two weeks, place an ad for one week in the post messenger recorder, place on the website, Facebook, and post at the agenda locations.
Right, and you should be able to get this, you know, two by two or whatever, so.
Okay. And then, I've seen ads on the first page of the post messenger.
There shouldn't be.
No, I know. So the process of this actually went quite quickly, it was brought up as a policy, and then Bill Morton wrote it, approved, and this is where we're at. So in a matter of short period of time.
It was three meetings. So this, just as I was actually, we recently brought it up, and then Bill brought us up. Good idea, and then we discussed it, and then the following meeting, we voted on it, so.
Ready for the business? Hearing none, we are adjourned.